Hello again, I'm getting underway with the workshop on alcohol management strategy. So I'm going to hand over to Geoff and Jim to run us through this and then we'll deal with questions. Sorry we're running a little bit late, a lot to cover today. Over to you.
I'll just do a very quick introduction and Jim can take it from there. Thank you. We want, some time ago we, we as a council adopted an alcohol management strategy back in 2013. Jim's going to talk about that. Sorry. Yeah, yeah, it was a beautiful thing. It was a beautiful thing. And then there was, we have an outstanding report back actually on this, so, from a few years ago. So it's a bit of a clean up act. But we, we know it's late in the day, we'll run through this as quickly as possible and just talk about some of the scope and what's happened. So Jim. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, kia ora everyone. Yeah, as Geoff said, we've got an outstanding report back. It's not only is it late in the day, it's late in the year and everyone's tired. So we'll try and get through this. A bit of light entertainment for the end of the year. So as you know, I'm-
Sorry, for people online, I just said, are there any samples?
As you know, I'm the vice policy person, or as Fiona in comms has called me, Miramar Vice. So I'm here to talk to you today about our 2013 alcohol management strategy, which we are going, which we've been reviewing and we're going to give you a couple of papers in a couple of weeks, or before the end of the year, just a full proper review. This is just a quick go, going over it now quickly. But we've, what we want to look at is the fact that the rest of the world has been looking at this sort of stuff as well. And they take a holistic approach to things. And we're thinking a holistic approach is what's needed here in Wellington as well. So we've got a report back from, to the council on this and we've got a little bit of the context of it. So we think, as I said, a holistic approach is needed and international examples, we've worked quite closely with our Australian colleagues on this. And they take a holistic approach. So we think this would be, our alcohol management strategy going forward would look like this, this little circle here. So we have a nighttime economy, which is the, I know the nighttime economy can be a dirty word for some people, but it, and we have, we have the regulatory framework, which is the ACT and we have to buy by annual and the regulatory side of things. And we have the safety and harm reduction focus, which has currently been undertaken by the Poonaki Promise. And we said we want to work closely with the Poonaki Promise on this and going forward. So just quickly, our alcohol management strategy was passed, was part of, in 2013, we came up with this thing called the Right Mix. And we had two papers called the Right Mix. I don't know why we had two papers called the Right Mix, but we had two papers. One was the Alcohol Management Strategy and the other was the Local Alcohol Policy. So the Alcohol Management Strategy looked at 20 different initiatives on how to reduce harm across Wellington. And there's the 20 there. And we've looked at, we've reviewed this and as I said, I'm going to give you some papers in due course, not today, but once we get some feedback from you on this, around what we've achieved and this and what we've progressed. And we've actually looked at this closely and 15 out of the 20, we've actually progressed quite well. There are five we haven't, two of them were, we attempted, but were not successful. And three, we didn't even bother, well, we didn't bother, but we didn't, didn't implement because, for various reasons. Some of them because they weren't actually council initiatives, they were central government and other reasons. Just quickly touch on our local alcohol policy, which was the other part of the Right Mix. This was quite a complex document. Those, I don't know, some of you might have been here at the time, 2014, I think we passed this. Yep. So we tried to reinvent the wheel. Average local alcohol policy around the country is between 10 and 20 pages. Ours was 93. It is. We tried to create-
I blame all the amendments that somebody moved.
We tried to create different sort of good behaviour and bad behaviour zones. So if bars were well behaved, we'd reward them by letting them stay open later. And if they were poorly behaved, we'd make them close earlier. Somehow, I don't know how, but we managed to offend both the industry and the police and the health. So they both came at us from all sides. And we end up being, we end up being judicially challenged. And the judge just took one look at it basically and said, no, this is, you've gone beyond the scope of the ACT. The ACT says, the ACT is all about harm, harm reduction, you creating all these entertainment zones and all this, not in the ACT. Yeah. Yeah, basically, yeah. So the Community Sport and Recreation Committee in 2016 withdrew it and it sort of, nothing's happened to it since. We've looked at some opportunities to explore options around a targeted local policy and that's a discussion we have later on. But I'm just putting it out there that there's, there's discussions around things, but nothing like the full-blown lap that was done before. So going back to the alcohol management strategy, as I said before, we, we achieved five, we achieved 15 out of the 20. I'm just going to give you a quick little brief here on, on some of the initiatives we achieved. So we were asked to look at, to work with Health Promotion Agency on social marketing campaigns. Here's a few, a few of them we did. Probably the most well known of those is No Your City Limit, which is out there now, which is about creating awareness of the alcohol ban area. And this is a key part of the Poonaki Promise and what they're doing. Another one, another key part of the Poonaki Promise is the Don't Give Yes campaign. So this is a campaign to prevent sexual assault in bars and working with bar owners and the industry to try and identify when sexual assault is happening. So this, so these are things that have, have been happening over the years. Another one, we said, but widening and strengthening the city alcohol, liquor ban. So the alcohol, liquor ban became the alcohol ban in 2018. And we had, we had, the local government act changed and that, so we had to provide a higher standard of evidence for it. So we reviewed the alcohol ban, as you know. Mount Victoria was added into it, Mount Fraser West, and Centipore was taken out. And then in 2019, Kilburny was added and Kelburn was rejected because of evidence. We've done quite a bit of research on this in the past, since then. And we know that 80% of people don't actually drink in public. So there's, so, yeah, and, but at the same time, yeah. It is. 80% of people also support the alcohol ban. They're two different surveys, but just happened to be 80%. Yeah. So if you've got any questions, just fire them at me. Yep.
But you need to use your microphone.
Yep. Okay. So we said we'd support initiatives to create, to increase non-alcohol activities across the city and late night entertainment areas. So what we do know is there's a perception out there that Wellington's an alcohol or booze-filled city. It's actually not. It's actually a food-driven city at night. And we have, like, food, food businesses have taken off considerably in the last 20 years. We've had an increase in both, in restaurants, cafes and takeaways. And I know some people say, well, takeaways don't mean anything. Well, actually, international research suggests when people are out in the town, they look for what's known as the three Ts: transport, takeaways and toilets. So those are the three things that they want. Whichever order you need them. We also know that we've done a lot of work and the council's done a lot of work in creating, in promoting cultural events such as Matariki, Chinese New Year, Diwali and New Year celebrations. Things like Wellington on a Plate have really taken off in the last few years. We have a thriving coffee scene. So there's a lot happening out there that's not alcohol related. But we still have some more work to do. So just continue on that one there. There's a range of issues that have happened, that are occurring across the city. This is a survey we've done, my Wellington at Night Survey. People are concerned about aggressive behaviour out there at night, excessive intoxication. There's not a lot of events or activities for families or for people who don't drink. We're, again, going back to our Australian friends, we've spoken to them. Sydney's developing a strategy for people over 40. So to encourage people over 40 to come in, we've also, Melbourne's working on trying to get families into town. Melbourne has a thing, what they like to call the flood of sobriety. So they have events and, and venues that attract families. And when they, those families and those people who aren't drinking or who are older maybe, come out on the street, they flood the street with sobriety. I'm not sure if that works or not, but it's, that's something to look into. But yeah, we're constantly told there's not a lot of events for families and, and, and young people, or young people who don't drink or older people or, yeah. We also do know that we've lost quite a few venues. So the St James has gone, Reading has gone, Town Hall and Paramount venues have all gone. Conversations, this is going to make it sound old, but conversations I've had with young people have told, they've said to us that they didn't go to Reading to use the movie theatre, they couldn't afford it. But they went there, there's a hangout area below. Yeah, that's what's missing. Those sort of things are missing in town, where you could just go out and have a safe space to hang out. We do know that the Poonaki Promise is working on a, in a youth hub, which is a really great opportunity to, to try and get some of these young people into town who are, who don't want to drink or who want to be away from drink. So this is, this is, the Poonaki Promise runs through this considerably. So we, yeah. Late night travel options. This is, so we know that, that mass transport is still an issue. So we've got buses and trains, but they stop around midnight. The buses, there are, there are special buses that go late at night, but they go to 10 different areas around Greater Wellington. They go on the hour, every hour. The last bus goes at three, the last bus closes at four. So already there's a disconnection there. We also know that they take the long way effectively. So if you're going to somewhere like Stokes Valley or somewhere like that, you've got to go through the whole heart and weave around that to get to where you're going. But in saying that, there's been, in 2003, no one envisioned ride sharing because Uber didn't come along to 2014. Sorry, 2013, no one envisaged that. 2014, Uber came along. And then other ride sharing companies like Zumi and Ola have also emerged. We do know from surveys that we've looked at, that people are getting into the city differently to the way they leave. So some of them are bussing in and then ubering home or walking in, ubering home. And we do know that we have issues around, people, a lot of people don't feel safe waiting for public transport by themselves. And so, so that's an issue we need to work on. We know the experience of women, they feel less safe waiting for public transport. They feel less safe at night in general. So these are issues we need to look at. So we're just going to look at a little bit of New Zealand's drinking habits here. So 80% of New Zealanders drink and the majority of them who do drink, drink safely and privately, whatever. Highest drinking, highest drinkers are European and other, or other men. other, or other men and women, and the lowest drinkers are Asian or Pacific women. And it's probably not going to be a surprise to anyone, but 18 to 24-year-olds drink the most. But they're closely followed by 45 to 54-year-olds. So they're, they're drinking a... From, from an international perspective, we are smack bang in the middle there, pretty much the OECD, with 7.9 litres of pure alcohol per year, which, we've done the maths, it equates to 80 bottles of wine, or 160 bottles of beer, per person, per year. Yep, the average is 10 to drink.
Yeah, yeah. councillor Paul has a question.
Councillor Paul, sorry.
So here, we've got Germany that drink more litres per capita than we do.
Yep.
And I remember I sent you that email a while ago, talking about how they can walk around and drink in public.
Yep.
So, yeah, I guess the argument is, like, why don't, why don't we just let that happen, like, why don't we just let that happen as well, if they drink more than us?
That's a very good question. This is, because this obviously just describes volume, doesn't describe habits, or behaviour. So how they drink may be different to us. And the next couple of slides might help on that.
Councillor Paul has a question as well.
Okay.
So we were at the Rainbow Hui last night, and definitely that issue of safety came up, but it's really mostly at Greater Wellington. So presumably, you're talking to them? Yeah, so hopefully you'll get that feedback from the Hui, because there's some, yeah, useful stuff. So I was getting my battery from my phone when I saw the first slide. Did you take the sponsorship stuff off? You haven't implemented it?
The sponsorship hasn't been implemented, no. It's still, it's a conversation we need to have.
I am grumpy about that. Yeah, that is Jim Beam, that, all that stuff, because sponsorship, we, and alcohol advertising, we know, like, the Law Commission, and that that's one of the drivers of excess drinking culture. So are you saying we're not going to do it?
No, we're saying it hasn't been done.
Well, when's it going to be done, given this?
That's the conversation we need to, that's going forward, we need to have, yeah, and that'll be in the papers that we're preparing.
Okay, okay, that's, that's important. Look, I will challenge you again on the liquor bans.
Yep.
So councillor Paul, I, you know, as you know, I've been a consistent opponent of them. What is the evidence that they are actually working, if apparently we've got all these problems, and we know it would be good to understand the German culture as opposed to the New Zealand culture then?
Yeah.
Because what we are trying to do is to get people to drink reasonably sensibly, and then we're reasonably sensibly, like, I'm just not having too high expectations, right?
So evidence that it's working, that, the police tell us that it is. I know that you're feeling like, we've had this discussion before about how the police, police the alcohol ban. They, they tell us, they use it as an early intervention tool. It's something they, they believe, if they can stop someone drinking at nine, they're less likely to encounter them at three. So nine at night versus three at night. That, if they're, they want people to be drinking safely in, in licensed establishments, rather than out in the street where it's dangerous, where they believe it's dangerous. They believe that these bottles particularly can be used as missiles. It's, it's that sort of thing. It's a safety, from their point of view, it's a safety-driven tool, but I understand that you, you're, you're... Yes, yep. So we're-
Sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. So I guess I'm interested in how we create that culture. So that, that is interesting. Also, we're just challenging you about the events. Like, so I live in the inner city with young children, and there's lots we can do. So I'm not, I'm not entirely, wasn't entirely convinced by that.
That's feedback we've had from groups we've spoken, and surveys we've done, they're telling us to this, yeah.
Obviously Covid's been difficult, but, but actually, there's heaps, heaps today. And saying that, the Jim Beam does feel a bit threatening. If you're around there late enough at night, it doesn't feel good, yeah.
So as you can see, like, because we're back to this one here, we're in the middle somewhere, Eastern Europe's to the right, and Muslim countries such as Indonesia and Turkey are to the left there. So it's, yeah, we're smack bang in the middle, pretty much, surrounded by the countries we compare ourselves to. The United States, Australia, UK, Canada. Yeah, so before I told you about the, sort of, the, how 80% of New Zealanders drink safely, and, or drink, and the majority of them drink safely, we look at hazardous drinking. Hazardous drinking is a different thing altogether. Hazardous drinking is defined by the WHO and the Ministry of Health as a score of eight or higher on the audit score, which I'm about to show you. Again, 18 to 24-year-olds and 45 to 54-year-olds are the highest hazardous drinkers. This is an issue for Wellington, we believe, because Wellington has a higher proportion of these people, of younger people in particular. So we are predominantly a, well, we have, we're a youth city. We're, we have three universities, we have a lot of young professionals in the city, we have a lot of these younger people who are drinking hazardously. So this is the audit score. I don't know how well you can see that, probably on the screen there, but it's, it's questions such as, if you score eight or higher on this, you are considered a hazardous drinker. So I, yep.
Yep. So the, yeah, there's some, the various, the first one's very simple, you know, how often do you drink? But then it gets actually quite, quite a little bit more soul-searching, you know? How many times have you, you know, woken up the next morning and couldn't remember the night before? How many times have you been asked by one of your friends to say, hey, have you got a problem? Has, have people, have, have someone been harmed by your drinking habits? And so it actually digs quite deeply into your, you know, into your drinking habits. And so the, the first one, the first one's really easy. You go, oh, yeah, whatever, I have a drink a week, or something like that. But then it gets a bit more soul-searching.
And then we have an additional category, again, defined by the WHO and the Ministry of Health, which is heavy episodic drinking. And this is the scary one. So this is, again, 18 to 24 and 45 to 54-year-olds, but this is defined as six or more in one sitting on a regular basis. It's a lot of alcohol. And unfortunately, Maori and Pacific men are the highest of, tend to be the highest heavy episodic drinkers. And so the ethnicity stats sort of reversed from the original one, where we had more Pakeha men drinking, but more Maori and Pacific men are drinking heavier.
The 45 to 54, is that kind of the post, the age band where the young children are kind of growing up, and then they're like, people are cutting loose? Is that basically, yeah?
Possibly, yeah.
A lot of generalisation, generalisations going on there. Very dangerous.
Heavy episodic drinking is six or more drinks in one session.
So, so are you saying that, so maybe European men in that one before, they're drinking more per year, but they're spreading it out over time, whereas you've got these groups who are going hard on the weekends?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or every night, or, yeah, but, yeah.
But, well, but no, because if it was every night, then they would be in the-
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's, it's basically binge drinking.
It's the same group.
Yeah, it was the same age groups. So it's the same age group. So we've got 18 to 24-year-olds and 45 to 54-year-olds. So that's a concern out there, and this is, yeah. So, so we looked at some police safety data, and we've looked at, so this is, the police use, the, the police have, yeah, they categorise it as, the data we've looked here is the data on injury, sexual assault, and related offences. And we've looked at other data as well, but this is the data we believe is alcohol-related, so the other stuff's theft and, and, you know, car crimes, that sort of, this is, and we know, and this is probably not going to be a surprise to anyone, but the majority of it's happening in, the majority of these crimes are happening in the central city. 84% of these incidents occur in the Lantham-Willis-Cambridge mesh block, which is basically Courtney Place and the surrounding areas. So one of the key parts of the Pooniki Promise is the, is, is the, is the Courtney Place surrounds area, so Cuba, Courtney, Manors, Blair and Allen, those, so they're focusing on that, and this is where, this is where the issues are happening. We know sexual violence predominantly happens in the same area here, in the same area, and the majority of sexual violence victims identify as women aged between 15 and 34. These are just reported cases. We know of those, those two young women who presented to the council earlier in the year, those numbers were a lot higher. These are just reported, but these are the ones that the police have got because they're reported. So we know a lot of those crimes go unreported, and we know it's out there, and we, and so the Pooniki Promise is working closely on that. We know also the majority of incidents occur between 8pm and 4am the following morning. You can see the top one there, that's, that, yeah, that's that time of day there. And we know it's predominantly at the weekend, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights. So that's actually more accurately Friday morning, Saturday morning, and Sunday morning. So you can see there that, that's when the, yeah.
So for this kind of data, is that where you'd be considering, like, revolving doors, or one-way door policies and stuff like that?
We've looked at that sort of stuff. That's, again, that would, you'd probably need a local alcohol policy for that sort of stuff. A local alcohol policy would be the only way to, to stop, to, 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 we know from international experience, so we've spoken to, one of the things with Sydney, they told us that they had a lockout, and they, the first thing they said was, don't go down that path. They had, it just moved the people out into the street with the problem. So in the bars, people are safer, they, and also, one of the other things that emerged was Melbourne started putting billboards upside, outside Sydney bars. If you want a great weekend, come to Melbourne. They started working with Qantas and offering cheap flights to Melbourne. So it basically, it basically killed Sydney's night economy. And they were, yeah, and so they were very cautious of going down that path, but predominantly it was also a safety thing. So, yeah. Our bars are generally pretty safe. We have a few bad eggs, but the majority of them are pretty safe, and we'd rather these people in the bars than out on the streets where things can go wrong. Perceptions of safety, so this is from the Quality of Life Survey. Wellington's still perceived as a safe city compared to other New Zealand cities that we compare ourselves to, those ones there. However, it's decreased by 10% since the last one of these, which was 2018, was it? Yeah. So, and the next one's in 2022, so we're not sure whether, you know, we're interested to see what that looks like, whether, whether that, it could be that this year was an anomaly, or it could be that we're actually tracking down. Perception of safety, again, it's a bit messy out there on the street, and this is from, this is from our Wellington at Night Survey we did earlier in the year. People are telling us that there are, there are some issues out there with broken glass, and excessive noise, bodily aggression, that sort of stuff. So it's, this is the sort of stuff that the Pooniki Promise is working on, and it's, it's the sort of stuff that we need to do, the council does this stuff, it's, it's basic council function, basically, and we need to do that well. So it's continuing that sort of stuff that would, to make this better. So moving on to the, sort of, the nighttime economy now. So this is some interesting stuff we've started looking at around the nighttime economy. So we know that approximately 13,000 jobs, which is 8% of the Wellington employment market, is employed, people employed at night, that's, which is 2,400 businesses. So we've got an active growth in this, in this region, in this section here, as I said before, cafes, takeaways, and, and even bars are actually increasing as well. Off-licenses are fairly flat there in that one, off-licenses of bottle stores and supermarkets, but, and so we, and so we know that this is a growing market for us. We also know that they, that a lot of these people employed in this area are under 30s. So this, it's, then, so our young people are not only the patrons of the nighttime economy, but they're also the employees. So this is a key sector for them. We've looked at some credit card spend on on-licenses. So it's interesting here, looking in the, so we've grouped the wards together. So the Lantham Ward is on its own, because it's, it's larger in terms of the number of licensees and the number of, yeah, of restaurants and bars in there. But we've added the southern and eastern wards together, and we've added the northern and western wards together. So in the, in the, in Lantham Ward there, we can see that majority, oh, well, that there's, it's trending upwards, both, both on-licensed bars and on-licensed restaurants, but restaurants is leading the way in the, in the spend. We are, as I said before, we are, there's a perception of a booze city, we're actually a food city. You can see there, it went off a cliff in Covid. But it's bounced back, but then it's, we're looking, that, it entered August there, we were in lockdown again there.
So it's actually looked like it bounced back almost better after Covid.
Yeah, so a lot of people decided they wanted to go out and eat, and sort of, yeah.
When it's taken away, yeah, you appreciate it more.
Yeah. And the southern and eastern wards down below there, you can see, it's a similar thing happening, but it's a wider gap. And some of this, we think possibly is the likes of Newtown and Miramar, where there's, it's more of a food, there's a food atmosphere out there. You also have, in Newtown, you have things like the hospital and other health facilities out there, so people are going, and they're, they're going to the hospital, they're working in the hospital, and they're eating out there. And Miramar's got the film industry out there as well. So there's, yeah, not a lot of, interestingly, in the northern and western wards, it's the other way around slightly. So bars are actually leading the spend in there. But as you can see in the bottom graph on the right there, actually, there are more, there are more restaurants in that area than there are cabins and bars, but the spend's the other way around. So as I said, it's an active growing sector, and, yeah, it's, yeah, we have seasonal peaks at the end of the year, and we're different parts, different times of the year, we have peaks that go up, and then we had the Covid crash. So moving on to off-licenses, which is bottle stores, because we can't look, we, we're just, we've excluded supermarkets here because we can't determine the spend between, if you're spending $100 at the supermarket, we don't know how much of that you're spending on alcohol. If you're spending $100 at a bottle store, we're assuming 99% of that is probably alcohol. So we kept, so we're excluding supermarkets from this. You can see there, that there's a perception that Wellington's a little bit like other cities, and that we have bottle stores in the suburbs, but actually, our bottle stores are all in the, in the central city. So we've got, that one on the right there, we've got 29, I think, in the central city. And when you actually start adding them up, you can sort of, these are things like Glengarry and, and, and other, and some of the, these are off-licenses, some of the grocery stores that are out there as well. And we have the, the, the big chain ones as well, but we also have the small little ones that are, there's quite a few in the central city. We know that supermarkets are predominantly in, out in the suburbs, so that, so, but we haven't, we're not, as I said before, we're not looking at the spend from supermarkets at this point. It's a fairly flat sector, and we know that, you can see there on the top, especially that one in the central area, the Lantham one on top left, we have seasonal peaks again. So Christmas, people spend up large, January, they're never drinking again, and then it sort of goes, picks up again, and then, and then, yeah. We think there's an opportunity for some regulation here, possibly, to support what was in the original AMS, plus initiatives such as the alcohol, alcohol ban, and to curb late night harm, through the possibility of a very tight, limited local alcohol policy based on off-licenses on the hours that they operate. Some other cities around the country have looked at this as well, and Auckland's done some interesting work on this recently. So I'm going to come to that in the end. So where to from here? We think the way forward is a four-pronged approach effectively, which is, as I said before, so the Pooniki Promise, looking after the safety side of things, they're doing a really great job, we want to support that. A regulatory LAP, or local alcohol policy, which I was just saying before, which is the, working on, looking at off-licensed hours, and we're thinking something like, Auckland has just recently tried to, or looked at nine till nine. This would be, and so there's a lot of evidence that suggests the later you purchase alcohol, the more you are, more likely you are to drink it harmfully. So this would, we're not looking at a local alcohol policy on on-licenses. We, as I said before, majority of our on-licenses are well behaved, they do, and we, we work closely with them. The off-licenses are slightly, I don't want to disparage them in any way, but they, this is where we're constantly told in our feedback from talking to, talking to licensees around, these are the problems. These are the ones that are supplying cheap alcohol in greater quantities out there. A regulatory fees bylaw, so we did the alcohol fees bylaw this year, and also a couple of years ago. At this one this year, we talked about working with the industry around bringing in the possibility of, of pre-application meetings and fees that go with that. And so we're talking to these guys. This would actually result in a, we'd look at rewarding well, bars and licensees that, that do well in terms of they get everything in on time, they're, they're season performance, we know them. So they'd actually get a discount, and the others would pay the regular fee. We wouldn't raise the fees in any way, because we're, you know, we're told by the industry, you keep putting our fees up. So we're not looking to raise the fees on anyone, we're looking to reduce the fees on the good guys. And then there's the nighttime economy stuff, so we want to enhance that. So this, moving on, so as I said before, this is just a little slide on the, on the Pooniki Promise there, and what they're doing. So they're doing a really good job of reducing harm, increasing community spaces, and improving public spaces. We want to enhance that and continue that, because it's doing great work. And so, just the same before, that's just the sort of outline of, I probably should have spoken to this while it was on the screen, but that's, so the nighttime economy stuff here, we think a strategy is needed to, for the sector, to create a vibrant nightlife, and how this will work with the, as, as part of our economic wellbeing strategy, so this will be part of that. A regional strategy, working with our neighbours, so that it is possible to do a local alcohol policy combined. We have a number of cities around the, councils around the country that have done combined local alcohol policies with other cities or other councils. So we've been speaking to Lower Hut and Pottador about this, and they've answered some of the things we're talking about, and we answered some of the things they're talking about. We're going to collaborate further with those guys. We want to also collaborate with national cities. So what has Auckland done that we could do, that we could do? What have we done? Christchurch, Hamilton, Dunedin, Queenstown, Tadong, are those places we want to work with them, because this is a shared space we want to learn from. And we also want to continue building on our relationships with international city partners. This time, two years ago, Geoff and I went to Australia and to learn from what they've done. We thought they're about, a couple, a couple of years ahead of us, they're about a decade ahead of us, actually. They're doing some really good stuff there on nighttime economy work, and actually creating it. One of the things they told us is, don't forget the other nine to five. We're not saying we'd have bars open till five o'clock, but part of it is, but the other nine to five is the late night, or the nighttime economy. We also know that cities need time, and part of this is, cities need time to recover. So the bars would still close at four, right, because that's the, the axis, they have to close at four. But they would, it's about creating that atmosphere that makes the city safe- But they would, it's about creating that atmosphere that makes the city safe, vibrant and healthy and, but, and clean. And so part of that, part of that nighttime economy is actually allowing for the city to, to recover between sort of four and eight, whatever, the next day or whatever. So that's when the cleaning comes in. It's, it's, it's a collaborative strategy that they've been working on for a while and they've, we understand some of the stuff they did, we can't do because our act is very tight and our act is probably better than what they've got. But there are some things in the act that aren't so great. So again, just moving on to the other two things there, that I said before, local alcohol policy. We think there's, we've had feedback from the police, they're interested in this. Regional public health are interested as well. They're looking at some, at some data for us about addressing this, these issues, especially in particular last drinks data. So they're doing some surveys on that and as I said before, the alcohol fees bylaw. So where to from here? The timeframes, we'd report back in March 2022 on alcohol fees options, that's the stuff I've done before. And then sometime in 2022, report back with a local alcohol policy options paper. And now I'll throw it over to you. If you've got any questions or feedback or...
Are there any questions? I can't see online, all I can see is us. Yes. Councillor Paul.
More feedback. Thanks Heath for this, this is awesome. I really want to understand about how our liquor ban rules impact, like, the most structurally marginalised people in our communities. Because from what I've heard from like DCM and stuff, you know, they get, you know, slapped with a fine, they can't pay it, they end up in the special circus court and then, you know, it just doesn't go anywhere. I just think it just makes their lives harder. And I worry that they're the people, like, actually being the main ones ticketed and punished through this policy when actually we could take a more productive, constructive approach to that than punishing them.
Yep, we acknowledge that. It's a blunt instrument, which is why I think we need to look at some of those other options to go like, can we address the availability of alcohol late at night, which addresses the people who are actually, the other people who are going and, you know, people do, you know? We've been down there late at night and you, you know, everyone's driving in and drinking at 11 o'clock. No one goes to town before 11, really, you know?
Yeah.
But they're coming in, drinking at that stage. And that's, that's the, the market we need to actually try and grapple with. Because they are drinking, they are drinking in public, having bought from an off-licence somewhere.
Yes, so the students tell us, no one goes to town till 11, 12. And the police tell us nothing good happens after one, so.
Oh, but you'll be surprised, like, it's actually often like, you know, like, that 45 to 54-year-old group of men in town that are actually really disgusting.
Yeah.
So like, I wouldn't blame it on the students.
No, no, no. They're the ones telling us it's not cool to go into town till later on. But we know, yeah, we know there are, as we said, that 45 to 54, they're, they're the ones drinking.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's a bad mix. But the other thing I was wondering is, yeah, so some information on that would be really helpful about how this affects, yeah, the most marginalised people. And actually, what's the process when someone who is homeless or, you know, like, what actually happens when they get fined? It'd be good to understand. The other thing I was wondering is through that LAP, is there, is there a potential to limit like where liquor stores can go and the proximity to like schools and social housing and stuff like that?
There is, yes, yeah. And that's, so we can look at density, you can look at location. Yeah, but we're, yeah, which is a discussion we want to have in that, in that paper we present back to you and, yeah, and, yeah. Yep, yep, yep.
Cool. I can't see any questions online, so it looks like we've finished, which is pretty amazing. Thanks for working through that so quickly.
A lot of light and entertainment to end this.
Some big mahi there. Kia ora, thank you. Thank you, people online.